Holton as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
Together today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous.
Holton as we know it today.
Is rich in the.
These lands surrounding you greatly.
Our steeped in indigenous history.
As together today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters. Plants. Omnivores. And ancestors.
That walked before us.
Of this traditional territory.
Trustees, I'll ask you to stand at ease while we start out this issue. Sorry about that. Please stand at ease. I now ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Holton as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding you greatly.
Our steeped in indigenous history.
As together today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands. Waters. Plants. Omnivores. And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Director Klein, could you please lead us with the opening prayer, the Our Father, and the National Anthem?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to read a prayer that was written by Raymond Freel and David Wells. Many here at this board know David Wells. Many across the province and the country do too. He comes to often to provide comfort and challenge to those of us in Catholic education. And this book is called At Your Side. It's written by these two men, and it contains many prayers and many resources for working through the liturgical calendar. This is called A Prayer for Lent, and we begin that tomorrow with Ash Wednesday. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, in this holy season, give me the grace to change, to believe I can be changed, to take small steps towards my true self, from selfishness to service, from judgment to mercy, from anxiety to faith. In this holy season, help me give time to prayer, as you did so often before a major decision, at the end of a long day of coming and going, and in the time of trial. Help me to spend time with you every day, to set aside my relentless thoughts, and abide in you in silence and trust. In this holy season, help me to fast from what is holding me back from becoming my true self. Mental habits which dull my attention to the habits of a lifestyle which could never be shared with anyone else on the planet. Help me to choose my fasting wisely and to persevere with your grace. In this holy season, help me to give alms to my neighbors in need, and not just my spirit change, but to better understand their needs, the pain hidden in plain sight. To give of my time and imagination to help those who are vulnerable to build a kingdom in my community. In this holy season, Lord, help me not to despair when I fall at the first hurdle, but to remember your generosity to the laborers who came along at the end as much as those who were there from the beginning. Do you join me in the Our Father? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is. Our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, on the temptation that delivers from evil. Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. Praise.
Thank you, Director Klein. Moving on to item 1.2, motions arising from in-camera. There were no motions arising from in-camera. Next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or additions to the agenda? And do trustees want any items to be removed from the consent agenda? I see Trustee Carabella. You have your hand up. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to delegate the policy, item 6.1.3.
Yes, I'd like an opportunity to put in the agenda. I'd like to ask Superintendent Cordero some questions about the IB and AP program. Having been to the presentations, excellent presentations, I wanted to ask him a few questions about the program. Thank you. Yeah, I just want to ask him some questions. I think the board would benefit from some of the. AP, IP follow-up, yep.
Mr. Chair. Is your microphone on because we can't hear you?
Yes, you couldn't hear me because it was off. So now you can hear me. Okay, so we have one addition, item number 12, which is AP/IB program, which needs two-thirds vote. So let's go and take a vote on that item and see if we have two-thirds vote, and then we shall go on the approval of the agenda as a whole. So trustees, we are voting on the addition of AP/IB program feedback. Is that what he said? Okay, so we're voting on item number 12, AP/IB program feedback, to be added to the agenda, and that's a two-thirds vote. Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote? Trustee Ohan Chanada. Trustee Agnew. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders, favor. And trustees are obeyed today, so they won't be, I won't call their names out. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention. We meet the two-thirds requirement. Item will be added on item 12, miscellaneous information, AP/IB program feedback. Going back to the agenda, we have one item which is pulled out, action item 6.1.3.1, delegation to the board. We have no other changes, so now I shall take this to a recorded vote on the agenda as amended. Trustee Ohan Chanada.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Yep, eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention. The motion carried, the agenda passes as amended. I just need a second to get things organized. Okay, moving on to the next order of business, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? None. We shall move on to our next order of business, which is presentations. 4.1, Senior Staff Updates. Superintendent Kroll, I don't see you, Superintendent Kroll. Are you online? Oh, Director Klein, could you please introduce the presentation?
Through you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize for that. Superintendent Kroll is at Corpus Christi tonight. They are hosting basketball finals, and his presence there was needed, as I think a lot of people coming to the school for the event, and I suggested that he would be there. We have with us today Matt Kovacs. He's the curriculum consultant, and he's going to make some introductions and lead us through this report that focuses on STEAM.
Thank you. Thank you for that warm introduction, Director Klein, and through you, Mr. Chair. My name is Matt Kovacs. I am the K-12 STEAM and Science Consultant, who works under Program Services Curriculum under Superintendent Kroll. Today with me as well, I have two of our four elementary STEAM itinerants, Francesca Flood and Amy Spurrel, who will be joining us to provide you with a bit of an update. Before we jump into the thick of it, I do, or I would like to just quickly say that it is a pleasure, and we are proud to be here today. We've been working diligently since October 2021, when we were brought on board to implement the STEAM roadmap that was approved by the trustees back in June 2021. So today is very much meant to be a very high-level overview of some of the work we've been doing. We fully have plans to bring a more detailed progress report later in the spring, but for now, this is a brief update about some of the work that we have been doing and we're continuing to do from October 2021. So we have it broken down into three parts this evening, so we're going to quickly discuss some of the supports we've been doing in our elementary panels from Kid 8, our secondary panel from 9 to 12, and then some upcoming events that we do have planned. So we are going to be doing it in three quick parts. For the elementary portion, I am going to pass it on to Amy Spurrel and Francesca, and they will be passing it back to me to wrap up.
Good evening, everybody. So to talk about our portfolio for kindergarten to grade 8 and the STEAM supports that we are offering, the four STEAM itinerants are focusing on all of these bullet points that you see here. So the first one is 3D design and printing, and this is where we're really looking at integrating mathematics as well as the engineering design process, which is part of our new science curriculum. For coding, we are looking at integrating grades 1 to 9, coding that came into the new math curriculum in 2020, and coding that came into the science curriculum in 2022. And we're working with educators to offer collaboration and professional development embedded within their classroom for their students as well. With building cross-panel facilitation and community connections, we're looking at those connections between the elementary and secondary panel. In particular, partnerships that were forging wishism programs and community connections with project-based learning tasks. Minecraft.edu has been part of our portfolio in Holton Catholic District School Board through our Microsoft accounts that every student has access to. But what we're really excited about is that we're making these connections with STEAM, so with science, technology, engineering arts, and math. And we're really looking at how do we integrate coding and game-based learning, which has been leading up to competitive activities in esports, which Matt will be talking about later on. later on.
Thank you and good evening. Just continuing on to what my colleague Amy has spoken about, so with robotics, we did see during the pandemic robotics was definitely disrupted, so we're happy to be focusing on that and revitalizing robotics across the system. It really brings those coding expectations that Amy was referring to in math and science to life, it brings those real-world problems that students can solve, and it also leads to opportunities for students to compete as well. Matt will later talk about our in-house robotics tournament coming up. Makerspace facilitation, so we've been working with many elementary schools across the board to establish makerspaces within their library learning commons. And esports is something that we're so excited about, and we've seen so much engagement, and it's picked up so much momentum this year around our esports from our esports tournament that we ran in January, which spanned across the elementary and secondary schools. Pass it back to Matt.
Thank you Amy and Francesca. Next slide, please. So kind of continuing on into our secondary panel a little bit, so once again, some high-level key talking points, we have a, you know, a few things going on in secondary. The one thing that we have been working very diligently on has been our STEAM interdisciplinary program in secondary. It's a pilot program at the moment that exists in grade 9 that introduces students into collaborating and cross-strands, cross-subject, project-based learning. So it's very much been a very honed-in program that we've been really proud to work with the staff at Loyola on. We've also seen again in secondary the reintroduction of robotics. Francesca had mentioned earlier that prior to the pandemic, we had a fairly robust robotics scene, but given the pandemic, we saw that tailor off, so we have been working on reintroducing that through things like First Robotics, we've seen some Vex Robotics as well as some Lego Robotics through First Lego League. We've also seen the startup of a new First Robotics team. Prior to that, we had only had one team, which is FRC 3161 at Holy Trinity. We now have the Firehawks First Robotics Team starting up at Loyola, which is exciting. Also, just quickly touching on our Makerspace pilots, so we have been doing some in elementary, but we've also been doing some Makerspace pilots in secondary library learning commons as well. So that idea that students can drop in and leverage a wide range of equipment to make their imaginations come to life, we've been looking at equipping those library learning commons with those tools. Also, a cool thing we have been seeing lately, yes, I use the word "cool," esports, it's very much something that's come up, especially with the ministry's endorsement with the $1 million scholarship being offered to post-secondaryes. We have been introducing esports to our students, which was actually quite exciting back in January, we, for the first time ever in my memory, we saw elementary students compete at the same level as high school students. It's not too often that you see that kind of thing, especially in athletics, so we were, it was great to see that in esports. And then of course, our STEAM collaborative inquiries, where we have been honing in and working on with a number of teachers, some innovative teaching practices in the area of PBL and formative assessment and learning. So a number of things happening in secondary as well. So trucking along, next slide, please, or next. So we do have a number of events coming up, which was the primary reason for us to just update you on during this meeting. So we do have about five or six events coming up in the springtime, so it was very timely that we're able to bring this update to you. So the first event that we do have coming up is our STEAM Innovation Showcase. This is one that we have been planning since, I believe it was May of 2022, a number of these events have been in the works since last spring. So that will be taking place March 8th at St. Francis Xavier in Milton. There will be three components to that innovation showcase, which will be, one, student innovation projects, which we've been asking our elementaries and secondaries to submit. So part of the showcase will be highlighting innovative, original students. Second part is our entrepreneurship pilot projects, which we're going to be involving a number of community partners in, and that is actually a pilot project run by the ministry. The ministry has provided every school board with a certain amount of funds to enable ideas related around STEAM, skill trades, et cetera, and entrepreneurship. So we will have those presentations as well happening that day. And then we are inviting a number of groups from around the system, so we will be having representation from Pathways, First Robotics teams, esports teams, STEAM clubs, et cetera, and a few vendors to run activities for the elementary students that will be submitting their innovation projects. Moving along here, we do also have our elementary STEAM week. Some of you who were around last year, you may be familiar with that. We had a great success with it last year, so we are playing and doing it again this year. So that will be a week of STEAM activities, guest speakers, webinars, STEAM challenges, et cetera. And we will also be holding our Minecraft Esports EDU tournament, which is a competitive STEAM challenge-based tournament that we're hoping to host in-person, location to be determined, we're just trying to secure a location, but we're planning on moving forward with that. And three more events, thank you Nikki. We are planning again due to the success of our tournament in January, we do plan another, or are planning another elementary and secondary competition for esports with live shellcasting on April 27th. Location is to be determined, because a lot of the times that event is run hybrid, so it may be run in-person, but it can also be run virtually. That way, we don't run into the issue of students needing to be transported to a single location, it can be run completely from a student's homeschool. Our Lego Robotics Competition coming up on May 5th, this is another one we've been planning for a while now, hosted at Holy Trinity Catholic Secondary in Oakville. It will be facilitated by Holy Trinity's First Robotics Team, which is FRC 3161. They have run Lego Robotics competitions for First Robotics in the past. We've kind of left it up to the professionals, but we are partnering up to support them in that, and we are directly involved. And it will be based off of the superpowered First Lego League season theme, which had to do with renewable energy and coming up with innovative ideas to problems. And that will be the theme for that Lego Robotics Competition. And last but not least, we will be partnering up, O耶app, Skill Trades, and our Pathways Under Student Success will be hosting a Career Discovery Expo for girls through the We Build a Dream organization that runs at Windsor. That will take place on June 1st at the St. Vladimir Cultural Center in Oakville. So a number of groups will also be involved in that event. I apologize, that was probably a lot of events to list off in a very short presentation, but if anyone has any questions, please feel free.
Thank you. I have a few comments, but I'll keep it for the last, but first, let me open up the floor to trustees for questions, I see a couple of hands up here. So trustee Saunders, you have your hand up to your floor.
Sir, can I just ask, so I've been getting a quick education on AP/IB, Shism, so how does STEAM integrate into this, is it like, do we change existing programs that have coding as part of it, or is it lunchtime events or after-school? How does STEAM get integrated into our...
Trustee Saunders, there are two different things altogether, so, but I will let Matt talk toward his team, yeah.
Chair, so the STEAM program exists alongside of AP and IB. So AP and IB exist in a certain number of our schools, and I'm sure Superintendent Cordero can speak more to that later when you have those questions. STEAM, what allowed us to actually create a STEAM program is the introduction of the D-stream curriculum in grade 9. So what we're able to do with STEAM is to combine different subjects that are D-streamed together through project-based learning, is a little bit of a different approach compared to AP or IB. Generally, what we've been seeing is STEAM existing in secondary schools that don't necessarily have AP or IB as a starting point. We're very much in the early stages of STEAM however, given that we had only started in October 2021. So I think in summary, what we're seeing is the STEAM program exists in secondaries alongside of AP and IB, as another program offering for our students.
Thank you trustee Saunders, your follow-up?
Just, what's esports, is it, or...
I think Matt can talk for us on that, Matt, go ahead.
Through your chair, yeah, that's the problem, sorry, you can't see it on camera, my smirk. So the, so I can't talk for hours, and these two can attest to that. I think in summary, if I were to summarize it, it is competitive video gaming, right? So it's taking a certain platform or title, making it structurally competitive, but what we hope to achieve through it is actually teaching students social-emotional learning, right, how to handle their emotions. We know that over 70 or 80% of students that we deal with in K-12 are gamers, right? So it's bringing those conversations into the classroom. It's also integrating STEM STEAM skills, because you need computer networking, you need broadcasting, et cetera, et cetera. The great, I'll wrap it up on this, the great thing about esports is that it doesn't matter if you can jump high, run fast, et cetera, it doesn't really have to do with physical athletic ability. Technology enables students to compete on the same level. And esports, I would compare it more directly with our First Robotics, it's very much designed to give students another experience where they can compete, even if they can't compete in athletic sports.
Thank you. I shall move on the speakers list, we have trustee Ohan Chanada on the online, trustee Ohan Chanada is the... Can I come back? Trustee Ohan Chanada, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yeah.
You have the floor.
Thank you, I just wanted to say what great work, both of my kids went through First Robotics, and it's really a lot of fun, surprise, you know, to be honest, it was really exciting to go watch, it's just as exciting to watch a basketball game, so well done, and hopefully I can attend the events here of coming up, well done.
Chanada, next up is our... Washer Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and just a couple of questions if you'll bear with me, so I do have a question, it'll probably roll into one, I may have to put my hand up back again, but these are amazing opportunities, and I love all of them, and so I guess my question is, are we ensuring that every school offers all of those opportunities so that people have equal access to participate in any of those things should they wish to? I guess is my first question.
Matt?
Sure. So we have definitely taken a strong focus to try to offer as many opportunities as possible at every school. So the realization we do have to make sometimes is that it is very dependent on school staff. So we do have for STEAM elementary itinerants, we offer direct support in everything that we've mentioned here, but we also recognize that the school climate and school culture is different at every school. So I guess in summary, I could say that in theory, we would love every school in the system to have all of these opportunities, some of the opportunities do rely on staff in the buildings.
Thank you.
Yeah, so for sure, absolutely, but I think, you know, I'm a big fan of sustainability, and when you implement something, I like to see that stay there. So I look at something like esports, and I'm not sure that all of the high schools were able to continue with esports teams this year, so I think that is a little bit frustrating to all those points that you mentioned, those kids who are not athletic, or all of the things that it's teaching them. So you know, you get kids excited, they play esports for two years, they look forward to that, and then they don't have a staff member to facilitate the esports, and you know, it's a priority for the board, and yet the high school isn't able to do that. So that is certainly, you know, something that I'm wondering how that will be able to be addressed moving forward, because if there's that much emphasis on it at a board level to not have a high school being able to participate, again, with the demographics you listed. So I don't know how that will be addressed moving forward, but just some feedback on that, which I'm sure you know, but it would be great to be able to have all kids have access to esports. And just to follow up on that, Mr. Chair, I also was curious, when I'm looking at all these amazing supports that you have, how are you ensuring that kids with special education needs are being able to participate fully in these opportunities that are available from a STEAM perspective?
Matt?
Yeah, through your chair. So part of our support directly in the elementary through STEAM is to work directly with SETS, CERTS, all various special education staff. I know, I think I gave it in one of my previous updates, one of our virtual reality pilot projects we were doing alongside Life Skills Classrooms in grade 9, that's been a very, you know, interesting focus for us to prepare students entering the workforce. So we do, for all of our opportunities, we do directly offer it to sets, and sorry, through sets, also gifted classrooms, right? We do work directly with CERTS, I know we had a number of CERTS that specifically entered their students into the First Robotics competitions, not as a part of their classroom, but as a part of the CERT portfolio. And also a number of our STEAM innovation projects, if I recall, are coming from gifted classrooms, plus our Minecraft EDU competition, we started in gifted classrooms, so we very much, whenever possible, try to maintain that connection to all levels of special education.
Thank you. Next up, we have trustee Kelly, trustee Kelly, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through your chair, thank you for this presentation, it's really great and informative. I was just curious about slide 8, where you mentioned the Career Discovery Expo for Girls in O耶app and Skill Trades and STEAM, about how different young women are chosen to attend these events, or is like the whole class allowed to attend this event, and how are they chosen, and like how are they exposed to this kind of different like exposition? Kind of get their feet...
Yeah, sure, and through your chair. So part of the Career Discovery Expo is that we are doing it in partnership with Pathways and Student Success. So I may have to go and check back, but I, the idea with the Career Discovery Expo is to offer it, I believe, to grades 7 to 10 girls. We are limited in capacity based on the actual venue of St. Vladimir, and the idea of that is by grade 11, that is when most of our students are going to be opting into different programs such as O耶app, Shism, Skill Trades, apprenticeship, et cetera, et cetera. So that threshold right there is a key target for student success and Pathways. So I believe the plan is to invite all of the grade 7 to grade 10 girls that are in our classrooms, but also their parents. One of the pieces of feedback we received from Build a Dream is that we actually find or find that it starts with the parents and not necessarily just the students. A lot of the times, the parents are the ones that need some of the education piece to get them actually into the skill trades. So that will be the plan moving forward, that Career Discovery Expo on June 1st.
Thank you, trustee Kelly, you have a follow-up?
Thank you, no follow-up, just a comment, but yeah, thank you for that, and I think that's, it's really important, especially for like an underrepresented group like that, and I'm excited to see what comes of this, and different equity seeking, maybe able to have these opportunities as well, so thank you for that.
Thank you trustee Kelly, next up is trustee Kennedy, trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation, fantastic. Just wondering, are there any schools, so if I look at K-8 as an example, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 7 programs, are there any schools that don't have any program? Like, let's pick a small school, St. Vincent, that I think has 120 students, do they at least have one program?
Matt, go ahead.
Sure, and through your chair. So offhand, I don't have that data on hand, I would have to refer back to the STEAM elementary writer, who's assigned specifically in the context of St. Vincent. To my knowledge at the moment, I'm not aware, but that doesn't preclude the fact that they may have perhaps a First Robotics Lego League team, that's very possible. So I would very easily be able to go back and compile a list, but at the moment, I don't have that information in front of me. It's a great question. So we do very much rely on building capacity within school staff, right? So our kind of portfolio and our mandate is both STEAM curriculum and STEAM itinerants, is to work with school staff to build the capacity. So to that end, if there are staff members at any building that were to come forward to us and say, you know, we need some support to start up a First Lego League team or esports, we have been very adamant about putting ourselves out there to support them, but I think it does go back to that community-driven, community-need-based assessment. Would this community for, I hate to use the example of St. Vincent, but with that staff community or with the parent community there, is that something that they would want? And perhaps the administrator of that school could identify that.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy, follow-up, go ahead.
Yeah, just one more question, the Career Discovery for Girls, is it an Ontario Youth Apprenticeship program?
Skill Trades, O耶app, apprenticeships, et cetera, yes.
That's what O耶app stands for, yeah. So, no, that's, I think that's...
Trustee Kennedy on the...
Oh, sorry, just wondering, so obviously, girls are definitely probably underrepresented in skill trades, but also like just news stories, like skill trades are just generally not a lot of students are going into that program, are we doing anything just for all students to, say, boys as well, to introduce them to skill trades who might not have...
And through your chair, so I can't fully... So I can't fully speak, given that uh Pathway, Skill Trades, OYAP, Schism, et cetera, falls under student success uh and Superintendent Del Sorto. But I can speak to the fact that they are planning another event. I forgive me if it hasn't been announced. I believe it has. April fifteenth at St. Francis Xavier, I believe it's on a Saturday, uh, and that is an event that's open call. It's not girl specific. It is open to um all groups. You know, because like you had mentioned, uh, there has been for a number of years an identified shortage um of students or youth entering the skill trades, OYAP, apprenticeship, et cetera. So there are both opportunities. There will be the general opportunity April fifteenth, um, which is the same format, I believe, is what student success had ran last year, and that's an open house format on the weekend. Uh, then, of course, in the evening of June first will be this one for girls in OYAP.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, with St. Francis, you said?
St. Francis Xavier. Yeah, that'll be the location for the April fifteenth event. Pardon me if I got that number wrong. I'm pretty sure it's on Saturday, the April fifteenth. I'm sure somebody would check their calendars. Uh, and then this one will be taking place in the evening on June first. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Your Chair. Uh, and just uh through you, Mr. Chair, a bit of a follow up on trustee Kennedy's number, say, or question around ability for students if there's not a program, and I understand capacity and everything. But I believe sometimes in elementary, when there's like one school doesn't have a hockey team, they're able to join a hockey team somewhere else. And I'm wondering if something like esports, um, you know, given that we're not as worried sometimes about capacity, because I do know that, you know, students can do it um at home or in other ways. Is is that something that we would be consideration if, you know, if assumption doesn't have a team, but nerding does, if students could possibly jump into an esports team at another school because there isn't such a drain on capacity? Is that something for consideration?
Good, Matt.
And through your chair. So I'm glad you brought that up again. You had mentioned it earlier, some of your feedback, and I did get to address it. The short version is, um, is that especially with a topic like esports, and the reason why we're just not seeing the those levels of support at the community yet is because esports is so new, right? So right at the at the moment, we're still really trying to combat the idea and the preconceived notion that video games is just sitting in front of your living room TV, and that's the end of the story. So we're we're fighting a little bit of an uphill battle to show that um to even educators, there is no reason why you can't take this integrated as a part of your curriculum and teaching. Right? So our our role so far has been trying to show educators, how can we take Minecraft, Rocket League, and different games and blend that into social emotional learning and different skills? So I I would say that over the next number of years, and that's our plan, is to keep growing this. I am really hoping to see we get that we get to the point where we do have capacity at every individual school to be able to support an esports team. I don't think there is any reason why we couldn't say one school could host students from another school. We've seen that with teams like our first robotics thirty-one sixty-one. A number of students that participate on that team come from other schools because not all of our high schools can support a first robotics team. So I think we'll get there. We're just, we're in the early stages. I I think part of that information phase that we're trying to do with legitimizing it. Yeah, it's part of our strategy with also doing Minecraft, right? So
With your passion, you guys have for this, that the expansion is forthcoming. So thank you very much for that answer.
Thank you.
I do not see any other trustees hand up. So I want to thank you, Matt, Emmy and Francesca, for your presentation here. Great work being done, and thank you for being champions at our schools. STEAM has a STEM, STEAM has evolved from a simple motion years back, and that's a great thing. But I like to see the wonderful work you do in our schools, and I want to encourage all our teachers and staff to keep doing the work and keep steaming.
Full steam ahead, yeah.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, trustees.
Thank you. We shall now, we shall now move on to our next order of business, which is delegations, and we do not have delegation delegations tonight. We shall now move on to item six, which is a consent agenda item. We have one item, six point one point three point one, which has been removed. We have a whole lot of action items here and some noted items. As you know, the consent agenda has been broken into two parts now, which first part is the action items and the noted items. We shall take one single vote on all the action items, and I shall read out the numbers and the noted items we shall not be talking about. Just proceed. So the items consent agenda items, and I will read out the numbers. Six point one point one, uh, six point one point two, and all the following numbers under six point one point two, six point one point three, action reports minus six point one point three point one, uh, and six point one point four. So we shall be taking one vote on all these items. And I'll read the motion. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the consent agenda items, as I read, uh, on Feb. twenty first, twenty twenty-three, as submitted. May I have a mover for this item? Trustee Murphy. A second, please.
I can second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Agnew. We shall take this to a recorded vote. Trustee, uh, Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly. Trustee Sanders, favor. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell. Kennedy.
Favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada.
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, no, none opposed, and no abstention. The motion, the consent agenda items carry. We shall not be talking about the uh noted items. So we shall move on to the next order of business, which is approval of the minutes. We do not have anything there. Moving on down, item eight, business arising from previous meetings, nothing there. Our next order of business we shall be talking about tonight is item nine, action items. Nine point one, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, school year calendar. I will now request Superintendent Denalfo to speak to this item, and then I will read the motion and open it up to trustees for discussion. Superintendent Denalfo.
Thank you and through you, your Chair. This action report is for the school year calendar twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. The purpose is the Education Act requires each school board to establish a school year calendar, identify instructional days, professional activity days, and holidays for each school year. Ministry of Education establishes the number of days for schools in the province and in accordance with Regulation three oh four. Each board is required to submit a board-approved calendar to the Ministry of Education by March first, twenty twenty-three. Some background information for trustees. The School Year Calendar Committee takes into account several considerations. An essential factor in the establishment of the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar is the integration of transportation services with our co-terminals board. Consultation, which complies with ministry direction, has occurred with the Halton District School Board. As of this date of this action report being presented to the Board of Trustees, no communication from the Ministry of Education has been received regarding the school year calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four. So this school year calendar could be modified at a later date. The twenty-three, twenty-four School Year Calendar Committee is comprised of representatives with parent representatives from the Catholic Parent Involvement Committee, CPIC, EWECA unit presidents, elementary and secondary, QB three one six six and fifty-two hundred representatives, the Principals Association representatives, and one trustee and representative of Halton Student Transportation Services. Our committee met on January eighteenth and again on February thirteenth to propose the draft calendar. School year calendar consists of one hundred and ninety-four days, which a hundred and eighty-seven are instructional days. Ten are for our secondary schools for their semesters and their school examinations as required by Regulation three oh four. There are two PA days that will be used for assessment and completion of report cards at the elementary level, an additional PA day that will be used for elementary parent teacher interviews. There are three mandatory provincial priority PA days that will occur next year, which will be devoted by criteria established by the ministry, which we have yet to receive. At this time of this writing, all seven professional activity days align with the Halton District School Board. Per Appendix A and B, there's the dates outlined for the school year calendar for next year. The proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar is being presented as an action item. Once approved, the proposed school year calendar will be forwarded to the Ministry of Education for final approval.
Yes, thank you Superintendent Superintendent Denalfo for all the work that goes on behind the scenes there. So now I shall first read the motion, and then I shall open up the floor to questions and discussion. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year calendar as presented. May I ask for someone to move this, please?
I'll move.
Trustee Murphy. Uh, looking for a second.
Trustee Kelly.
Sorry, trustee Kelly. And seconded by trustee Murphy. I shall now open up the floor to trustees for questions. For Superintendent Denalfo is here to grant the questions. Now just note and say thank you to trustee Murphy for representing us uh on on this committee meetings. Thank you, trustee Murphy. And so trustees, we have questions for about the school calendar? No questions. Very good. Trustee. Kennedy, I don't see a hand up, but I see a hand going up. So trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
I'll put my hand up first.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering, just looking at the calendar. So Tuesday, September fifth, that's a PA day? I mean, it seems obvious, but you have usually labor days on Monday, school starts on a Tuesday. Does school now start on a Wednesday for elementary?
I I shall pass this on to the expert Superintendent Denalfo.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's correct. So together with the Hall from District School Board, they have opted that we go with the Tuesday PA day um next September, and then school would start on Wednesday.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Do you have a follow up question?
Just overall PA days, is there, does the ministry mandate how many there should be? Or is it, is it by school? Um, at least like we have one on Tuesday, and then we have one with like a month later.
Superintendent Denalfo.
The ministry does mandate the number of days that we can have as professional development days. So there are seven. Okay, so three are dedicated to provincial priorities, and then you have four for your school board that you can identify what your topics would be for those days.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. I see no other hands up, but uh okay, so we shall proceed, uh, since there are no other questions here. We shall now, I shall now call the, you have, you have any questions, trustee Kennedy? Okay, thank you. Uh, we shall now take this to a recorded vote. I shall call the vote on item, action item nine point one, and you see that in front of you. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar as presented. Moved by trustee Kelly, seconded by trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly. Trustee Sanders.
Favor.
Trustee, we are the student, trusty, in, trustee chair. Trustee Bowie.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella. Trustee Powell.
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy. Trustee Ohan Chanada.
In favor.
Agnew.
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention. The motion carries. The school year calendar is approved. We shall now move on to the next action item, which was pulled out from the consent agenda, and that is item nine, oh, sorry, we are going to nine point six, which is actually six point one point three point one. Policy I dash oh six, delegation to the board. I shall now ask trustee Ohan Chanada to please read the motion. Trustee Ohan Chanada, can you see uh the screen? If not, Allah, someone.
Green, yes, I can't, I just can't see the motions, that's all.
Give it a second. Can you go down to the motion, please?
We just need to scroll down a little bit more or scroll up, whichever way you're looking at it. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. The following Hello?
Sorry, there's a delay. Please go ahead and read the motion.
The following recommendation is presented for the consideration of the board. We are resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy I dash zero six, delegation to the board be approved.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. So trustee Ohan Chanada uh moves the motion. This item has come from policy, and we only need a mover. So now now I shall open up the floor to trustees who have any questions on this. I see trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up. Is it from the past? Okay, so I'll put your hand down and uh ask trustees for questions. So I see trustee Carabella, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I requested this item to come out of the consent agenda because on further reflection uh on some of our debates last uh policy meeting, I still thought it was an important uh addition to the policy to add under the, so I'd like to make an amendment to add under the response to delegations. So there's the first bullet point, and I'd like to add a second bullet point. This is on page four of four. And the second bullet would be an individual trustee may also make a notice of motion on the matter of the delegation, which would be voted on at the next regular board meeting.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. So I see on the screen, we have the response to delegation uh under item one, second bullet. Is that what you were thinking about, trustee Carabella?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I shall need a mover and a second. This is an amendment. Uh, I'll need a mover and a second, please.
I'll move it.
Oh, you moved it, yes. One second. Okay, seconded, trustee uh Kennedy. Trustee Carabella, you have five minutes to present your, uh, to open up discussion, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So um, I think it's important uh when somebody is going to be looking at the delegation policy, getting ready to delegate, that the response they can uh receive from delegating is is super easy to understand, super clear. So the first part refers to the Board of Trustees. We'll either receive it as an information item or um a motion that refers the matter to a committee or a request to staff report. And then there's another option that can happen, and it is that an individual trustee may also make a notice of motion on the matter of the delegation, which would be voted on at the next regular board meeting. I'm not really um changing anything. I'm really just adding something that already can take place, but it wasn't right here in the policy where somebody would need to need to know that. I think you said that it refers to our bylaws. So in in the bylaw, you'd have to go searching for it, and not everybody would know to search in the bylaw. It's nine point one four. It's actually not even in the bylaws under the delegation section. So another reason why I think that um it would make sense to just have this clarifying motion, uh, clarifying amendment. And I hope that, um, so I'm not adding anything. I'm just making it more clear and user-friendly. And I hope I can count on support for this clarification.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Uh, I shall now open up the floor to discussion and trustees' questions. One second. I shall now open up to questions, and then we'll have debate. So for questions, you have three minutes. You have three minutes for questions and then three minutes for debate. So I shall now open up to questions. Let's ask questions uh on the amendment you see in front of us. And then after all the questions are done, we shall uh have a debate on this. Sounds good. So I see trustee Vashar Agnew, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just trying to put this into a question. Um, it's it, it's not a debate. It's just more of a clarification. So we have this information in our bylaws. Um, this is, this is a delegate, this policy is for people who want to delegate to outline for them This is, this is a, this policy is for people who want to delegate to outline for them the process. So I'm, I'm not totally understanding why we need to make that comments about the notice of motion piece. Like this is, I would understand if this was a delegation policy for if this was an outline of what trustees have to do, if you will, but if the idea is to make this for the person that's reading the policy, that is following the policy, I don't know that that has to be in there when it's we just went through this with our bylaws. So I think I'm just struggling with that a little bit. Like to me, it's more when I read this, it's more of a reminder to trustees that they can do this rather than a reminder to the person that's that's the way that I read it more than the person that's doing the delegating. So I'm just trying to understand that, if you can help me clarify that a little bit.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Trusty Carabella, would you like to respond?
I'll try. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's a good question. So I think that our previous policy had, and we had four options. So it was very clearly set out what the four options were, that that as a response to the delegation, we still even have action item and we could respond in four different ways. And one of them was to have a notice of motion. That's what's missing. If we just had the first bullet, we wouldn't have that option that we have. And I think it's important, okay, it's just telling the parent that those are one of the options that can happen. I think we need to be clear and transparent. Save whatever, what can happen.
Thank you, Trusty Carabella. Yes, Vice Chair Agnew, go ahead.
Thank you. So follow up then. So I'm wondering then, Trusty Carabella, why that's, why that is its own individual point? So if the point above outlines the options, why don't we just add notice of motion to that top piece? Like it would be motion is adopted, refer to a committee, request a staff report, like as opposed to it having its own point? If the intent is to outline for the people making the delegation, that these are the four different ways in which it can be responded to, then I feel like it would be better placed in the above as part of that because it's separate now. Like you have the one bullet point mentions three, then your second point mentions just one as opposed to putting all four together if that is in fact the actions that can come about as a result of the person's delegation.
Thank you. So Vice Chair Agnew, are you looking for a friendly amendment to this?
Yeah.
So let me go back to Trusty Carabella and see what Trusty Carabella thinks. Trusty Carabella?
Yeah, just to point a clarification on that, that's fine. Like I just thought it's always easier. Like I personally like, I would love that first paragraph to even be brought into just bullets. It's just easier than seeing a whole paragraph to have it clear. These are the four things that can happen. Automatically receive as, as information, a motion to refer to the matter to a committee. Three, like another bullet, request a staff report or a motion to request a staff report on the matter. Or three, a notice of motion on the matter. That's fine, but if we're looking at just structurally, that's fine, whatever the board would like, we can put it in as well. So I'm happy with that amendment or like with that suggestion. It's just to make it easier to understand.
Thank you, Trusty Carabella. I'll come back, I'll circle back to you. I made a note of this. I put it in a parking lot here. And we'll finish all the questions and then come back to this item as a first item for debate or friendly amendment. Next up for questions, we have Trusty Ohan Chanada. Trusty Ohan Chanada, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. I do ask and you can maybe come back to me because I'm going to ask a request. Ask, can I see the current bylaw that refers to that? I don't have it handy on the screen and the bylaw previous? The one that Trusty Carabella is referring to, can I see the two bylaws back to back? And you can come back to me if we need some time to bring it up to the screen.
Come back to you, Trusty Ohan Chanada.
Yeah, thanks.
Let me ask Ms. Wynden in the meantime, can you get the bylaws, you know, bylaw number nine point one four, nine point one four. Ms. Wynden, in the meantime, could you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's what I'm doing.
Ms. Wynden, bylaw twelve point six. We'll come back to you, okay? Yes, okay. Trusty Ohan Chanada, you're looking for the bylaw, right?
Yes, please. Just so I can make a good decision, I'd like to see the two bylaws reference the current bylaw at which this policy is written towards and then the previous one that's also been mentioned. I need to look at the two together, please.
That's twelve point six, nine point one four. So let me tell Ms. Wynden, it's bylaw thirteen point five. Okay, we'll come back to you, Trusty Ohan Chanada. Next up for questions, we have Trusty Murphy. Trusty Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, not really a question, but sort of a comment in that I am in favor of there being something that shows the delegate that a notice of motion that can be voted on like is an option. I just think that, that one goes to the trouble of preparing a delegation, it's obviously an issue. I think it'd just be nice for them to be aware of that. Instead of it kind of just clumped into a wordy phrase to be separated out so they know that makes sense.
Thank you, Trusty Murphy. So for questions next, we do not, Trusty Kennedy, you have your hand up for questions?
Yes, I agree with Trusty Agnew. I think if that's how you're going, if we could put it in bullet point one because it gives you the four options there and it's very clear. That way it's never really overlooked. I mean, some trustee, and that perfectly matches with the bylaw. So we can have it. And then, you, Mr. Chair, thirteen point five, the response, I thought that that's under that.
Let me check.
I don't know if that would apply.
Yep. Twelve eight. We have that here, twelve eight. And so we'll come back to that one, Trusty Kennedy. You have any other questions? Thank you. So we are done question time. We are coming back to Trusty Ohan Chanada. Trusty Ohan Chanada has asked the bylaw side by side with, so that's twelve point eight, right? Yep. So you have it on the screen, Trusty Ohan Chanada, twelve eight?
Right, this is, this is our current bylaw that's been, this is the current bylaw that we're working off of. So receive the delegation's information unless a motion is adopted to refer the matter to a committee or request a staff report. So, so the ability to provide a motion is still involved in that. And what's the previous one? I'm sorry, be patient with me because this is, I just want to make a right decision here.
Read it out loud.
I'm going, the equivalent response, article response from the board was twelve point, twelve point seven in the previous bylaw and it read, "The board may make a decision on the presentation at the same refer the matter to a future meeting, request a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting or receive as information." And then the next sentence is the same. "Once the decision is made, the secretary of the board will communicate the board's decision in writing to the spokesperson for the group or organization."
Thank you, Trusty Ohan Chanada.
Thank you. So the one deal was referred to a future meeting that we have, refer it to a future meeting. Okay, no, thank you.
Thank you. With that, all trustees have asked questions. You have three minutes, ask questions one time. That's done. We move on to debate now. So I shall open up the floor to debate on this, on the amendment to the motion, to the policy which you have seen. And we have a couple of hands up. We have Trusty, Trusty Kennedy, you have the floor for debate. We have, we shall move on to Trusty Murphy. Trusty Murphy, you have the floor for debate. So at this point in time, I shall circle back. Yeah. Okay, okay. So at this point in time, we have one item in the parking lot. And that was the friendly amendment, which Vice Chair Agnew had suggested and Trusty Carabella's some discussion was going on whether they're okay or not. So do we want to talk about that change now? We can take a recess for a couple of minutes and come back while wordsmithing is being done. Is that something which trustee is okay with? Trusty Carabella?
May I add to the fact that a notice of motion is made on the matter and would be voted on at the because I don't know if everyone knows that.
Okay, so I see you want to take a recess. Will we wordsmith that, Vice Chair Agnew?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if we need a recess, if we just need to determine if that's
If you can get this done quickly, let's, let's continue then. Trusty Carabella?
So I'm happy with that wording of putting it all in one paragraph and take away the bullet. I just have another comment on the the, is it now or?
This is the amendment that you're talking about and we're proposing to be a friendly amendment?
Yes.
So let's work on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Parliamentarian Kapoor?
I, just to consistency with the other language that you have in your bylaw, it may be that which would be an action item at the next regular board meeting. It's inherent in the, on the concept of notice of motion, but that would be probably more consistent with the rest of the bylaw.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Yes, thank you.
Okay, Trusty Carabella, are you comfortable with the changes? Wait on the screen. Vice Chair Agnew, does it look right to you? Okay, so for it to be, this is a motion which has been moved and seconded. For it to be a friendly amendment, it has got to be unanimous consent. So I shall go around a table now and see what trustees, if there's any opposition, then we have to go back. Trusty Carabella, you're obviously okay with that. Trusty Kennedy?
In favor.
Okay, you're okay with that? I'm not taking a vote. Trusty Chair? Trusty Powell? They're not okay, then we got to go back to, sorry. Yes.
What we're actually voting on?
Correct. So we are voting on inserting the item you see in yellow, highlighted in yellow. Sorry, this is, we are working on inserting this wording rather than having a separate bullet that Trusty Carabella was proposing in the past. You can see on the screen, there are two bullet. So you're okay with that or not?
In favor, kicking away the bullet.
Okay, good. Vice Chair Agnew? Kelly? Trusty Murphy, Trusty Bowie, Trusty Sanders and Trusty Bray, good to see you. Okay, so we are all okay to add this item and I'm okay.
When you find a privilege, sorry, Chair, you forgot me. I know I'm not in the country, but that's okay. I'm still here, see? Hi.
Sorry about, are you okay to add?
This is just adding it as a friendly amendment, right? We're not voting on the entire amendment, right? Yeah, I'm okay with adding this. Yep.
Sounds good. Thank you. My apologies. And so trustees, we have in front of us the the amendment to what trustee, friendly amendment to what Trusty Carabella moved and seconded by Trusty Kennedy. So that's the change in front of us. Do we have, I had opened up debate. So do we have any further? Debate, we have three minutes to debate. Okay, I do not see any hands up, so I shall call the vote. And we have oh, sorry. Okay, okay, I'll give that to
Yeah, excuse my ignorance, but I'm still not clear on why we like, why, why are we doing this? Sorry, I just, forgive me, but I'm not clear.
Sorry, I'll hand this once again to Trusty Carabella to provide a better explanation. Trusty Carabella?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So I think that this should be there to allow the person who is putting a delegation together, spending much time on it, putting it all together, bringing this, their concern or their suggestion or a matter to the board. And there are four things, there are four ways we can respond. And without this, so we can either respond by accepting it as an information item or there could be a motion that we refer it to a committee. Or we could make a motion, so someone would make a motion, a second to form a committee or a staff report. And then the fourth is that a trustee could also make a notice of motion. And so we're just letting the person know that, that that's another, another option that could happen to their delegation as a response. And when we just read the, the bylaws from two thousand and sixteen, actually, we were allowed to make a direct motion. We could decide the matter at that meeting. We made motions right at the delegation that got voted on, that didn't wait for the next meeting. So this is a bit of a step back where you make a notice of motion to give the board and the public more time to think it through or, or whatever. So we're already a bit removed from having immediate action, but it is an option that is available. And I think it should be there for clarity and, and to let people know what they can expect.
Thank you, Trusty Carabella. Trusty Powell, I shall now hand it to Trust, the Parliamentarian Kapoor. He's got a comment on this and I'll come back to you on this one, Trusty Powell, okay? Parliamentarian Kapoor?
Thank you, Chair. And I do apologize to the board that I, I'm processing this as I first heard about it this evening. And the issue I, that I found, I think I finally crystallized on a bit of a concern is that that is not a response of the board. The response of the board is as a group, as a, as a board, you can accept it for, receive it for information, you can refer it to a committee or you can request a staff report. That's board decision. A notice, an individual trustee may make a notice of motion arising from the, from the delegation. But that's not the response of the board. So in that case, if, if the board could, the board would have received it as information and an individual of trustee would have put it up as a notice of motion. No, the matter, the topic brought forward a notice of motion arising out of the delegation. But that would not be the board's response. And that was the fundamental change that was made in the renewal of the, in the review of the bylaws. So I think this is not I apologize for not catching this earlier, but I don't think this is a response of the board. I don't may not be appropriate in this to be added.
Thank you, Trusty Powell. I'm coming back to you now to your question. You asked why, why it's added and you have the response, some Parliamentarian Kapoor.
Getting it, I'm getting it. I'm glad I'm not.
Thank you. Good. Thank you. I shall go back to Trusty Ohan Chanada. I saw your hand up sometime back. Trusty Ohan Chanada, do you have a question? I made a note of it.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a comment. I just, and it's almost farting on a tool, Mr. Kapoor's response there. Yeah, thank you. I just have a comment. I just, and it's almost farting on a tool, Mr. Kapoor's response there. When a delegation come in, and I've delegated, and the board needs some sort of response where it's information referring to a committee or a staff report. I think we, this was changed, and this does not speak to it, but it was changed so that we weren't making motions on the fly, because when you make motions on the fly, so to speak, the error or the percentage of making an error is great. So we wanted to make sure that nobody was making decisions, that we had enough data and enough information, we had proper decisions. So, but to that response, it's not a response, a notice of motion. We can still make a notice of motion whenever we want through our meeting, now albeit we need two-thirds, right, or unanimous to do that. So I don't see it fitting in there myself.
Thank you. With that, I do not see any other hands up. So we have the friendly amendment in front of us now, which was adopted, and we have the, it was moved by Trustee Carabella, seconded by Trustee Kennedy. I see, Trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up. Okay, you're lucky. I'm just going to call the vote.
Just further to Trustee Ohan Chanada, I don't think, we can't make a notion, a motion whenever we want. We can only make a notice of motion, isn't it 24 hours before, sorry, 3 o'clock the day of?
Sorry, can you repeat your question?
Sorry, I thought, Trustee, I said we can make a notion, a motion whenever we want, but we really, we can only do that up until, I believe, 3 o'clock of the day of the board meeting, is that?
That changed, Trustee Kennedy. So you can make a notice of motion up to 3 o'clock the previous day, which is the standard way of doing it. Then at a board meeting, you can make a notice of motion, depending if it's a delegation, if it's a staff report, an information item, three, four, I think, three of those things, you can put a notice of motion there, provided it's germane to the discussion happening. So, there you go. Any other questions, Trustee Kennedy? So with that, Trustee Carabella, I'll hand it over to you close to discussing. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, even when we would make, when we're making a motion to set it to a committee, it's still like one trustee that's going to move it, and another one seconds it, and we vote on it. So I think it's still here, whether, I mean, it's still somebody, it's not like eight people all of us bring up a motion as a board response. It's one trustee that would bring that motion forward to bring it to a committee, request a staff report, and in this case, or make a notice of motion, which is different than a staff report or a committee. So it's still a board response done by an individual trustee, and I think for clarity, it needs to be there to let people... I don't, it's, it's what we do anyway, so it's just to make it clear. I'm just trying to make it clear.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. And with that, I shall call the vote on the amendment. Trustee Agnew?
So I'm opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Chua? Trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Kuzma?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Paul?
I am opposed.
Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Ohan Chanada?
Opposed.
And Trustee Duard is opposed. We have four in favor and five opposed. The amendment fails. We shall now go back to the policy as a whole, and the motion which was read by Trustee Ohan Chanada. Can we see that motion up, please? Trustees, we have the in front of us, the policy has been, come to us from the Policy Committee. Trustee Ohan Chanada has moved the motion, and I shall now call the vote on the motion in front of us. Trustee Murphy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders, opposed. Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Paul?
In favor.
Kennedy, opposed. Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
We have five in favor. We have three opposed. The policy passes, motion carries, and we shall now move on to our next item. Our next order of business is staff reports. We do not have any of them tonight. Information items, yes. We move on to the next order of business, which is information items. We have a few items here. Item 1.1, student trustees, student trustees present here tonight. Can you please present your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I will be presenting achieving tonight. So today, we held the 2023 Student Trustee Elections in San Antonio, New York, and we are excited to congratulate the new student trustees for the 2023-2024 school year, when that information does come to the board. In addition, at our last General Senate Meeting, we held a discussion, discussion concerns regarding connection and communication between various student groups, and brainstormed ways to foster these relationships with our senators. As well, individual senatorial delegations came up with initiatives to host within their schools, and we are very excited to see these projects come to fruition. Furthermore, the Environmental Stewardship Committee passed two motions at the February General Meeting. The first is to release a survey to students regarding student perception of climate change within grades seven to 12, and the second is to host a climate symposium organized by the Senate for students also in grades seven to 12. The symposium is planned right now to take place towards the end of April, in line with Earth Week. Both proposals passed with Senate support and are now moving into planning phases.
I will be saying the believing part today. So at our last Senate meeting at San Gateria Taquakuta, the Catholic Faith in Action Subcommittee presented their light-up Lent proposal, which would encourage staff, students, parents, and members of the HCDSP community to participate in almsgiving by donating to the HCCF throughout the season of Lent. The Subcommittee would also promote two different ways of participating, either through direct donations to the HCCF website, which would be forwarded to the community, or by participating in the 24-hour fast on March 30th to 31st. Student senators will work with their administrators and the school chaplain in promoting this initiative in their respective schools. Students voted overwhelmingly in support of this, and we are excited to see the initiative build off the success it had last year. And I'll also be saying the belonging portion, as Ari's voice is a little quiet today. She lost it at the conference. At our last Senate meeting, some student senators raised concerns regarding diverse staff and asked us to refer these concerns to the board. As one student said, "There is a very big gap between the culturally diverse students and monotone staff diversity. There is ignorance and cultural deafness in the classroom setting because staff and students have different lived experiences." And our Indigenous Education Committee recently published a video encouraging grade nine, 10, and 11 students to add Indigenous education courses to their option sheets. And this has been shared via individual schools as well as through our social media.
Thank you, student trustees, for your report. I see a couple of hands up here. So we have a couple of questions for you, student trustees. So first up is Trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Oh, I lost the page there about belonging. You noted that a few students mentioned about not feeling belonging, like the lack of diversity. And so I was just wondering, like, what steps will you take beyond that? Will there be a larger poll taken? I'd love to see, like, a large sample size to see if that's like a general school.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. So who wants to answer this question? Trustee Bowie, go ahead.
So I know that our board recently held our student census as well as our workplace census. So we are not going to step on the toes of the data team and wait for that data to come back to the board. This is something that sort of came up. It wasn't an action item that had sent it. It sort of just came up naturally within the discussions that we are having, and we were asked to refer it to the board on behalf of senators. So I would encourage that we wait to see the workplace census results, and then what sort of action items result from that. But just to know that this is something that is at the top of students' minds, that they are hearing within their schools, and that they are experiencing. So that's something for us to keep in mind as we're moving forward with those decisions.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Do you have a follow-up question? Okay, thank you. Moving on down to Trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly, you have the floor.
My question was answered, so I'll just put it as a comment, but thank you so much.
Trustee Carabella, you're up next. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, I was going to mention something on that phrase, too. I found it quite an overreaching statement, and in this context, it said that it was just one student. So I felt it was perhaps subjective and maybe not backed by any data, but I understand now that you will be presenting something.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. And up next is Trustee, sorry, Trustee Bowie, you want to do a respond?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification. So that was reflective of a larger discussion that was had. The point was brought up by multiple students. We sort of just took one that was in the minutes as a summary of what the discussion was about. And I would remind the board that student senators are elected as representatives of their community, and they do outreach within their community to share the voices of students. But like I said, this isn't any quantitative data, and that won't be us presenting it. That will be coming from the data team with the results of the workplace census and the student census.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Your mic is on. Moving on down, Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering, I've asked a couple of times. It sounds like maybe next month, the month after, about the census. I believe it was taken... We're now getting into March.
No, we are not in March yet.
Well, it will be the next board meeting, the next board meeting will be March, and the census was in June.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Yes, I remember you asking that question multiple times. Director, I'll pass it to Director Klein. This is the report on the census. Yeah, Director Klein.
Thank you very much for that question. We did, I did refer to this item with our researcher, Dr. Colomore, and I would turn over the microphone to her.
Mr. Chair, so we have been working diligently on the collection and the analyses. So the January timeline that was tentatively shared with the board and with the public was a tentative schedule. Before any of the results can be released, particularly descriptives about our marginalized communities, we had to do consultations. So once January hit, and then, you know, throughout January and February, we've been doing those consultations with those four particular groups. And from those discussions, there arose the need for additional consultations. So we have scheduled those, and we are completing our last one this coming week. And then once those are done, I believe Director Klein will be speaking to the Chair about how...
So, Dr. Colomore, I did not get the date correctly. When did you say the report would be?
We didn't land on a date, but Director Klein and I were talking about the March, the second meeting in March, a potential date.
So, Trustee Kennedy, you have asked the question three times in the past. Can we add this to, Director Klein, can we add this to business arising from previous meetings? It should be in that table, and I did not, I do not remember seeing it over there. So I think we should add it there, so we do not forget it. So can we make a note of it?
I'm just wondering what, what, what is meant by, so if the survey is raw data, we must have the data the week after it's... We don't have that data to share.
Right. I'll pass it to Dr. Colomore again.
So through you, Mr. Chair. So with this particular collection, with respect to the sensitivity of the data, it isn't as quick as just pushing a few buttons and providing, producing a report. There are specific data standards that we have to follow when we are collecting the data, when we're analyzing it, when we're then disseminating it. So unlike all of our other collections, it's actually much more complicated, and we have hired an additional person to help us with this collection. And they worked with us throughout the summer, getting the data set ready for our analyses. So we are making great progress, and like I said, by the second meeting in March, we should have the descriptive.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy, I'll circle back to you if you have a question. Okay?
Yeah, my concern is just the data would be nine months old. I mean, it'd be stale.
Right. So we have put it in the business arising from past meetings, and we won't forget about it. Moving on down, we have...
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Just had one more question.
I'll come back to you. I'll come back to you. I've given you two questions. So moving on down, we have Trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly, you're up next.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. So in regards to what the student trustees have mentioned in their report, and that it is a priority within the student senate, as they mentioned. I do know that in the business arising from previous meetings, part of the consent agenda, there is an equity audit there. I just know the status is mentioned in progress. From any of the senior staff would be able to get a little bit of an idea about what's going on similarly to like the student census on that, too.
Trustee Kelly, we are on a different topic, right?
It was in regards, because the specific part of the equity audit mentions that it recognizes effective review, development, implementation, and monitoring of equity and inclusive education policies, just to make sure that students feel uplifted and supported by the staff as well. That's why I'm specifically asking about the equity audit.
Okay, well, okay, it could be germane to the topic thing, some kind of figure out, to make sure it's germane to the topic. Director Klein, would you be able to?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would direct that over to our equity officer. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Chair, for the question, and through you. So the equity audit is still ongoing. We've had numerous focus group discussion, sorry, key informant interviews, review of policies. We do not have a final report yet. That should be coming perhaps in the next month or two. So that's still in progress, for sure.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly?
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. We shall now move on down the speaker's list to Trustee Carabella. Sorry, Trustee Saunders, your hand is up. You have the floor. Sorry.
Just a bit of a disturbing thing, there's ignorance and cultural deafness in the classroom setting because staff and students have different lived experience. Can you give me an example of what would constitute a cultural deafness in the classroom?
Trustee, Trustee Saunders, can you please repeat? I was...
This statement seems to be a rather disturbing statement. "There is ignorance and cultural deafness in the classroom setting because staff and students have different lived experience." So I'm just wondering what exactly would be an example of cultural deafness in the classroom?
I'll pass it on to student trustees, if you'd like to respond.
Yes, and thank you for the question. So I, just to give a little bit of context around the discussion that was had. Students definitely were not attacking our staff. They were not saying anything necessarily about staff's intention in this debate, but it was about a discussion that many students shared concerns that they had experienced times where staff, just because of virtue, that we all live differently, we all have different traditions, did not have knowledge of certain traditions, and they did not see themselves represented in our staff. So some of the things that were brought up were, you know, religious and cultural traditions. Some of the things were brought up that were things like lived experiences, experiences with racism and microaggressions and those types of things, especially in, you know, classrooms where those types of topics become relevant. And so, you know, we have teachers teaching, you know, our world religions curriculum that are talking about different culturally diverse holidays, and students don't necessarily see themselves represented in that staff and the discussions that are had in those classrooms. So it's that type of thing, and it was definitely more about, you know, making sure that there's positive representation for all students, so that all students get the opportunity to see themselves represented in their classrooms, than negative actions or intentions on the part of any of our staff members. That was definitely the context of the debate, and that's sort of why we picked that quote to show, because why we picked that quote to show to you all today, because, you know, ignorance and cultural deafness aren't a fault of anyone. It's simply about, you know, the representation that we have in our system and the ability for our students and our staff to connect.
Thank you, Trustee Bowie. Trustee Saunders?
Again, that was a little bit more disturbing. What exactly would be the microaggressions that our teachers are exhibiting towards students? I mean, that sounds like a very concerning issue.
I think I'll be a little careful to word the questions like that because our staff is not really... I, I, I think I'll be, uh, a little careful, uh, to word the questions like that because our staff is not really, I don't think we are going in the right direction there. But Trustee Bowie, if you would like to.
But just words are important.
Right, okay. Trustee Bowie, if you'd like to, uh, elaborate on that.
Yeah, 100%. And to clarify, I did not say that our staff were the ones perpetuating microaggressions against our students. I was saying that students were sharing experiences, but when they had experienced things like racism and microaggressions, not necessarily in the classroom environment, um, but just, and teachers weren't necessarily relate, able to relate to those conversations. That's all that I was saying.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Thank you, Trustee Bowie. Thank you, Trustee, uh, Saunders. Uh, next up, we have, Trustee Bowie, I see your hand up. Is it a question for your own report?
No, I just, I just did want to make a comment about, um, the student census and the workforce data. And I wanted to say that, um, of course, we want everything, all the decisions that we make to be backed up by large scale data. But I do also want to emphasize the importance of a forum like Student Senate and hearing from our student leaders who connect with, you know, their peers on a regular basis and who are able to bring those concerns to us. I completely understand the necessity for us to see that data, but I do want to emphasize the importance of, um, listening to those voices and our responsibility as student trustees in sharing that information. And I would never share anything if I thought it was misleading, a misleading claim or something that our senators, um, were saying that was not representative of the student body, but we do, uh, want to share things that students share that are important with us.
Very well. Thank you. Uh, I shall now move on, uh, to Trustee Carabella. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one comment about, uh, extra staff being hired to be able to do the census. So I'm just wondering how that happens. Is that out of like the budget? Where does that come from?
Uh, I'll pass this on to Director Klein if you want to, uh, bounce back. Director Klein?
Yeah, I'll start certainly, but I'm caught the eye of Dr. Colomore and Dr. Colomore, if you could just address that.
Mr. Chair, um, thanks for the question, Trustee Carabella. So, uh, our board, like other boards, received funding particularly for the collection of demographic data. We've received it for the last few, even so, part of those funds were used for that position.
Thank you, Dr. Colomore. Uh, Trustee Carabella, you have a follow-up? Thank you. Up next is Trustee Powell. You have the floor. I see your hand up.
Okay, uh, okay, go ahead.
No, I do, sorry. I actually just wanted to comment to say to Trustee Bowie, thank you. I hope you don't feel attacked. I feel attacked for you and I just want you to know that we're here to listen. That's our job. So, thank you.
Order of order, uh, yeah, sorry, I, 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 I guess I'm the attacker.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Trustees, 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 there's a point of order raised, there's a point of order raised. When we say, when there's a point of order raised, everybody is quiet. Okay, so the person who raises, the person who raises the point of order will speak and, 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 and state, uh, which rule has been broken. So, Trustee. Well, I, I, uh, so, okay, not familiar with all the rules, but certainly wasn't an attack. It was a question arising from the verbiage and, uh, that, that's not an attack.
So, Trustee Kennedy, uh, sorry, Trustee Saunders, uh, that's not a point of order because you're no rules, procedures have been broken. So, so that's a comment made by Trustee Powell, which I will address. Okay, so that's up to me to address. So, Trustee Powell, you made a statement to Trustee, uh, Bowie that, that we are here to listen. Yes, we are here to listen. At the same time, the chair will make sure that, uh, lines are not crossed. I know, and statements made, uh, carefully listened to. So I, I, I would not look at it as an attack on student trustees because I know you, you feel that way, but, uh, I, I wouldn't look at it as an attack. It's a question asked because I was paying a lot of attention to the questions being asked and and, uh, the report is presented, we have questions and we need to respect that.
My turn?
Yeah.
Okay, it wasn't one specific. It was in general, this feeling, even just reading from the previous meeting that I missed. And I felt like it was, there was a, uh, just, it wasn't received, it felt like. I feel badly even for myself because I'm coming, um, from, I, I haven't experienced that myself. So it's on me to turn around and listen. And if that is happening in the schools, we need to listen, right? We represent that. So I think we need to do a better job personally. And I want to say thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Trustee Paul. Well received. Uh, we are here to have a good discussion and, uh, student trustees are presenting their version of the report. We need to respect each other's point of view and that's where we are here, uh, tonight. So, uh, great work. We still have a couple of questions on, you're not being let go that easily. We have Trustee, Carabella, your hand is up for the second time. Okay, uh, Trustee Kennedy, I'm coming back to you for the second time. Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor. Okay, thank you. So I see no other hands up. Yeah, but I need to see the hand up there. But Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'd just like to say, we always appreciate an aptitude to listen to student voice and of course, that's what we're here to do. But we are also always happy to answer questions. Um, we wouldn't have been, I wouldn't have been here in the board meeting for the past two years if I wasn't prepared to do so. So thank you and we appreciate your support as always, but we are always happy to answer questions and, uh, we're confident in, in our senators, we're confident in the type of work that we do. So I'm always happy to answer those types of questions.
Once again, student trustees, thank you so much for your report. I know there's a lot of work that goes on to writing this report and, uh, bring it to the board and, um, we do appreciate that. The different point of view is always welcome all the time. So thank you so much. With that, we shall move on to item 11.2, school update. Director Klein, please present your report. Director Klein?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering, do you have that PowerPoint? I, I can share my screen. Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, I'd like to pay a bit of, uh, thanks to Superintendent Crowell, who's, was here, now he's not, and to Superintendent Nar. Because, uh, the report really reflects a lot of the work that they've been leading in their, uh, in their areas. And, uh, of course, the staff that work, uh, with them as well. So I do want to make sure that's acknowledged. I thought it would be nice to highlight a couple of, uh, areas. Uh, one is, uh, leadership and faith formation in, in that, in as much as that falls under Laurie's mandate and leadership. Uh, and then of course, to give a bit of an update on student athletics, I think you're aware too, that up until the time he came in here about, uh, an hour ago, Superintendent Crowell was, uh, at Corpus Christi where there were the basketball championships taking place tonight. And, uh, I'm sure it must have really, really killed him to be there watching basketball and not here, but he dragged himself here and we're thankful for that. In terms of leadership, we say in, uh, our, our Catholic faith tradition that we talk about formation, but not necessarily, creation or, 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 or other words, but we are formed. We are formed as Christians and, and I would say we're formed as Christian and Catholic leaders too. So we'll talk a bit about that, talk about adult faith formation and then student athletics. Our leadership development strategy is in place to create, enhance and promote leadership opportunities that engage staff as transformational leaders to support succession planning. We have to always think about who's coming down the pike in terms of, uh, formal and informal leaders in different, uh, roles in our board. Um, history has taught us that, that when we have shifts where there's no one to come up behind us as leaders, uh, that's a gap and we have to be aware of that. Five components of leadership strategy are as follows. Discerning leadership, again, discernment is, uh, a key word in a lot of, uh, Catholic, theology and in terms of formation, aspiring to roles of added responsibility, awaiting, uh, leadership roles, mentoring programs that are in place and then ongoing development. The discerning leadership program, the leadership journey, your steps in your direction, is a program that is in place at Halton Catholic District School Board. It's open to all staff interested in exploring their leadership capabilities. Often it's seen as, uh, in, in many boards as teacher centric. When we think about leadership and the leadership path, uh, it's important to know that this is something that is open to, uh, those who are not teachers. Twenty staff members are participating in this year's program. In terms of aspiring to roles of added responsibility, we think of these traditionally in terms of principalship and further on, uh, that we would see in the Education Act. And the Catholic Leadership Program that we have in place here, it is a two-year program for those aspiring to an academic leadership position. Forty-one staff members are currently enrolled in year one and twenty-nine staff members are currently enrolled in year two. Also have adult faith formation sessions for, uh, staff as well. It is important and not something we take for granted that the faith formation of our adults is, uh, at the core of, of Catholic education. We teach who we are, we teach our faith. We say we don't teach faith in thirty-minute blocks, but we teach it throughout the day and in different, uh, in different, uh, forms. And so it is important that our, our adults are given the opportunity to, to hone their own faith and reflect. Actually, it's quite a blessing to be able to have a job or a profession where you're allowed to do that. It is something I, I don't take for granted and, and consider amongst the greatest blessings. It's designed to provide opportunities for, uh, our staff to deepen their faith and their vocation in Catholic education. How they've responded to the call of leadership, how they've responded to the call of being educators. Program offers a variety of topics and speakers from, uh, within our system and throughout the diocese of Hamilton. Some recent sessions include Catholic social teaching and our call to agape, dancing with God, a year of grace, the liturgical calendar, a lectionary for, uh, prayers and, uh, for classroom prayer. I'm blocked here on my own screen, sorry. Adult Faith Formation, Theological Education for Leaders Program provides intentional faith development for all of our administrators across the system. And there are four programs that they can choose from. It's a bit of a menu of choice. Eucharist, sacrament of our gathering, how does our participation in the Eucharist influence our lives personally and professionally? We know that in Catholicism, the Eucharist is at the heart of, of our prayer life and our, our liturgical life. Finding and celebrating unity in, in Catholic education. Pouring unity through our theological theme. And communication essential to unity. Hopefully not a clumsy segue, but moving on to student athletics. Probably aware that, uh, in elementary, basketball playoffs begin next week and their system championships take place at the end of March, March 28th. Hockey is, uh, uh, on its way as well. We have tournaments taking place on March 1st, 8th, 22nd and 29th. Secondary girls volleyball championships took place last week, last Wednesday. Congratulations to Bishop Redding for winning the junior championship. You probably saw some of these tweeted out. You retweeted or liked. Congratulations to Assumption for winning the senior championship. So congratulations, not only to those athletes, but the, uh, the staff members who took time to dedicate themselves to it. We all know that kids learn more than just sports through this. They learn a lot of, uh, life lessons that they take on, uh, forever. Boys' basketball playoffs currently underway, championships tonight. And do we have an update, Superintendent Crowell?
Sure. Um, good evening, trustees. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. We can update that it was a quite exciting game between Assumption and Holy Trinity that was tied at the half and then Holy Trinity was able to pull it out at the end. Um, we were at capacity at, at Corpus Christi, so we had to turn people away from the door. There's over five hundred parents and students and fans and alumni. It was like the good old days. It was really exciting to see. So it was, it was great to be there and be part of it.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. Makes me wish we charged admission. And if we did, I don't want to hear it. Alpine skiing and snowboarding championships, uh, the H double A swim meet took place two weeks ago. And boys and girls curling season is underway. And boys and girls ice hockey playoffs are underway as well. And the championships will be next Thursday, uh, for those high school athletics. We heard earlier about esports, had a little bit of a discussion around that when, uh, Matt was here to, uh, to discuss that with us. Elementary and secondary schools were able to participate in an intraschool esports tournament championship. And congratulations to this year's tournament champions, Saint Marguerite Juville and Saint Ignacio, Saint Ignatius of Loyola. Matt? It's the end of my presentation and I'd be happy to, uh, respond to any questions.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustees, uh, do we have questions for Director Klein? I see, why should I give you your hand up? It's flow.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, and, and you didn't mention this in your report, but it is a school update, so I'm going to ask a question. Um, with respect to the cafeterias, we've had some high schools that have not had operating cafeterias this year. Um, sorry, I'm looking, I see. So, and understanding that there have been staffing issues and all that kind of stuff, but to be a hundred percent honest, not the concern of staff, of, of parents or students. Um, is there plans moving forward to change who is providing those services? Are we looking at another year ahead without it? Like, it, it's been a big deal. Um, and people are looking to find out what's going to be done to remedy that. Understanding we don't have very many months left, but what is that going to look like moving forward?
Looks like, uh, Superintendent Love.
Thank you through you, uh, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Agnew. To be perfectly honest, it's still is a problem. We know it's a problem. At certain schools, it's more of a problem than others. Uh, it goes back to the staffing element. It's been a problem with our vendor. The other problem we have though are vendors pulling out of the marketplace. So there are some boards where it's difficult for them to get people to even, or not people, but vendors to even come in and go forward. So it might be something we have to start revisiting regarding cafeterias and other options available. So as it stands right now, um, our current vendor, Chartwell's, has been trying to get people. It opens up for a bit, then it closes for a bit. And we've seen that at a couple of schools in particular, right? Where we get the staff in and then for whatever reason, staff leaves. And it's a problem when it's not necessarily something that we control to a degree. We control because we, we have the vendors. But from as far as providing the service, we don't really have that control. There are some other options that we're looking at at one of our schools in particular in Milton. But to your point, Trustee Agnew, as it stands right now, we're pretty dependent upon our vendors. If there's somebody else out there, we could, we could look into it, but there really hasn't been anyone that we've been able to find to be able to go into our cafeterias.
Thank you. Why should I know?
Yes, thank you through, Mr. Chair. So thank you for that, Superintendent Love. So just to follow up to that, so when, and recognize, I did come from that industry. So recognizing that they're facing all of the same challenges through the vendors, but, you know, without us going out for an actual formalized, you know, RFP or whatever that process might be to allow people to bid. Maybe there's a mom and pop shop out there. Maybe there's somebody else that's able, that's not the earmarks or the chart walls or the sedexos that are able to, to support these services. Is that something that we would consider? Because obviously Chartwell's not able to meet their contractual obligations. So is that something we would at least attempt to see if we could do?
We, I was trying to manage expectations a bit on my previous, we would, we would, we would RFP. My concern is being able to, like a cafeteria, especially one of our, our Milton schools, where you're dealing with quite a few students, over two thousand students at the, the schools. We have to look at the ability of the vendor. As, as we've seen right now, even that can be challenging because Chartwell's is a big vendor, just haven't been able to provide the service we expect in our schools. So that's, you mentioned the mom and pop kind of shops are smaller ones. There is a minimum requirement. Having said that, um, we are open to it. Like, so there's an RFP coming forward. It was difficult during the COVID years, as we know. But it is something where it's, it's something we would definitely entertain. I'm not saying we're closing cafeterias, not what I'm saying at all. But it's, uh, I do know some boards, press problems have actually closed it because of this very reason. So, um, it's not the answer everyone wants to hear. I recognize that. There's been some creative options out there that we're trying to get through right now. With other problems that you don't even realize when you're doing it, right? Yeah, so, um, but there.
Thank you Superintendent Loves. Trustees, do we have any other questions on, on school sub, school updates? No? Oh, that's very good. Thank you Director Klein for presenting school updates. And we shall now move on to item eleven point three, construction reports. Superintendent Merrick, could you please provide your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. We have the construction report for February. And we have three schools report on tonight. The first being Milton number three or St. Ceteri, that you can see from the photos there, up on the screen. The footings are nearing completion. We've moved on to masonry on the, on the number of the sections of the building. Up next month, we have underground plumbing, which has just started this week. And then we have site services ongoing and masonry on the low bearing walls to take place over the next couple of months. On the next page there, we have Milton number nine. Again, footings are underway and almost fully complete. Underground plumbing on the site is a little bit more progressed. And site services started earlier back in the fall and are ongoing throughout, probably into the early spring. And then up next, we have masonry focusing on low bearing walls again, similar to, to Milton number three there as well. And a little bit earlier in the process, on the next page, we have North Local Number Four. Just not a lot going on there, but the fencing's up, tree protection's up. We passed our inspections on tree protection. We have our building permit now. So we're looking at starting rough grading in the next week or two, and then footings will follow that as well. So three active sites on the go, lots of work in the construction department, but happy to see these sites progressing and the weather this winter has been fairly good so far, knock on wood. So it's been a good start to the construction of those three buildings.
Thank you Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Merrick? We have trustee Saunders. You have your hand up, get the floor.
Yeah, just a quick question. Are we, because of the milder winter, are, are, are the constructions a little ahead of, ahead of plan? Superintendent Merrick?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. They, they are a little ahead of plan, but it's, all three of them are very early stages still, so. Yeah, I'm not changing any, any schedules yet, but it's early days still, but it's been a good winter so far for, for construction.
Thank you Superintendent Merrick. Trustee Saunders, you have a follow-up? No? So no other questions from trustees, but Superintendent Merrick, is there any way we can get this information out to school councils and schools? The construction update that you give us here, so that the community is aware in all locations that there's something happening? Is there a way we can do that?
Yeah, so the day after the board, after each board meeting, or sorry, each second board meeting in the month, when our construction report comes, they're posted on our website, on the school planning website, so. Yeah, they're, they're out there, so it's, it's accessed through our board website and they're, yeah, they're there.
So back to the same questions I have, and lots of parents do not go to the school board website. Is there a way we can, Director Klein, is there a way we can let folks in the community know that we have an update happening and something to think about? It's not that. Think about any thoughts on that, Director Klein?
I, I think offhand, this is something that we'd want to discuss with senior team, I think, with communications and with others. I think we could probably brainstorm some, some strategies that might make it a little more user-friendly for people, a little more, you know, ubiquitous in some way. I think we, we all have a, a hand in this as well, everybody even here around the table too, in terms of through our social media and through our other ways of communicating, of trying to over-communicate some of these developments, so that people do look at it and they think, we're moving forward, we have traction. And it's good news. Every time Superintendent Merrick is here, he's sharing more good news. And we just want to make sure we get that out.
Thank you Director Klein. I think I saw Ms. Vindan's hand up there. I don't want to put her on the spot, but.
No, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have my hand up. And through you, I have actually been working with Superintendent Merrick on a communication strategy that will help. We will be posting, we will be putting a link on the landing page of the school websites, and, and in particular St. Ceteri, that directs them right to the school planning website. And we're currently restructuring a little bit in the school planning, so it's a little bit more parent-friendly. We're also looking at social media to help, you know, spread, you know, share the reports when we do get them monthly and, and make them easy, more easily digestible by the, the parents and staff and students in the, in particular St. Ceteri community, but the others as well. So we do, that is on our radar, and we've got a couple of other projects and ideas on the go. But in the immediate future, you'll see this week, there will be a, a, a link, a button on the St. Ceteri website that takes them directly to the school planning website, to the construction updates.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Merrick for presenting your report, and we shall now move on to our next item. We move on to our next order of business, which is twelve, item twelve miscellaneous, miscellaneous information. We added one item, trustees, at the beginning, the approval of the agenda. Item twelve point three, which is AP IB program feedback, and that was by trustee Saunders. Trustee Saunders, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I, I've really been lucky to have accompanied some of the trustees and Superintendent Cordero. They've, they've put on some pretty impressive demonstrations of AP and IB. And I, I did have some questions I wanted to ask him, because I think, I think it's important stuff. So, sorry, I just wrote it down. What measures, through you, to Superintendent Cordero? What measures have you taken in AP and IB to make those programs more accessible to diverse communities and students?
I'll pass this on to Superintendent Cordero.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders. Just a, a point of thank you for all those trustees who attended either or both of the AP and IB sessions the last couple of weeks. In response to your question about access and opportunity, over the last three years, there have been a number of steps that we've taken. In two thousand and twenty, we eliminated the entrance exam that students had to write to put forth their application for either the pre-IB program in grade nine or the AP prep program in grade nine. So now we rest our decision-making into acceptance of students entirely on their marks, demonstration of learning skills, a portfolio of artifacts, an essay and conversations directly with students themselves, with their teachers, at the elementary panel, or conversations between guidance counselors and school administrator with those students and, and their families as they come into various sessions at the high school level for information nights or a conversation around the program and the benefits of the program. To that point, in years past, we used to ask students in the Halton Catholic, or Halton District School Board, our co-terminus public board, to have teachers sign off on a student's application. We no longer require that. Students can apply from other districts in our co-terminus board or the private school system as they wish. They do not require the approval of their school teacher. We used to have a requirement where students would have to take a minimum two AP courses to remain in the AP program, recognizing that some students want to specialize in math, or they want to specialize in science, or any one area, art, French, AP program. We've reduced that to just a minimum requirement of one AP course for the, for them to continue their studies in, in the AP program. Students sometimes find that either in AB, in AP or IB, that after two or three years, maybe that's not their fit, and they want to transition to a specialist high skills major or maybe into one of the trades, OYAP program. So those students in, in previous years, prior to two thousand and twenty, would be asked to return to their home school. We no longer ask that. Those students have started in that community. We feel it's important that they remain in that community for their health and wellbeing, so they remain in that school, even if they're no longer participating in the AP and IB programs directly. Also, this past September, for those students in the IB program at St. Thomas Aquinas, if after grade eleven, again, they say, okay, you know what, I, I just can't, my, my French is not strong enough because it's a basket of courses they have to take, or maybe, you know, my science isn't quite strong enough, maybe in physics or chemistry, but I'm great in biology. We've worked with the International Baccalaureate Office into introducing a certificate program that allows IB students to specialize in those areas that they have either greatest interest or highest levels of success. And in the case of, of students, because there, there are costs to, to some of these programs in, in certain years, wherever there is financial need, the schools themselves are supporting those students and those families to ensure that finances are not a, a barrier. The, in terms of the success of, of enrollment, I could tell you that three years ago, we had twelve hundred students in our AP program across our system. We have just under two thousand five hundred now, so an increase of, of greater than one hundred percent. In our IB program, we, three years ago, we had about two hundred and twenty-five students at St. Thomas Aquinas. Our projection for September twenty twenty-three is about five hundred students. We currently have two hundred and seventy-five IB applicants, students in grade eight from our district, the public system, the private school system, who want into the IB program, two hundred and seventy-five. Two hundred applicants have already been accepted. Another fifty or sixty or so are on a waitlist, and we're hoping that they will also join us in that program. In terms of anecdotal evidence, and these are conversations had between guidance counselors designated for the AP and IB program, and obviously conversations had with teachers and, and, and students directly at St. Thomas Aquinas and at Bishop Reading. And I also can note, again, this is data based on the exams, the writing of exams in the AP program and the IB program, where in IB you have to identify if you need accommodations. And in AP, they also ask for demographic data from all students who write their exams. So I'll just share with you some of that data. On the AP side, this is for Halton Catholic. Of the total number of students who wrote exams last year, twenty-three, self-identify, twenty-three percent self-identified as white, thirty-three percent ident, self-identified as South East Asian, twenty-one percent I'd self-identified as Middle Eastern, three percent self-identified as Latino, nine percent identified as East Asian, and ten percent identified as Black. Over the course of three years, the number of students, Black students, have increased by five hundred percent in our AP program. We have a population of twelve percent of students in the AP program that have an IP. Nineteen percent of students in AP are first language or other than English learners. And twenty-two percent of our students in the AP program are new Canadians and new to the HCDSB. In terms of the IB program, again, these, those, those numbers are a little bit more anecdotal. But again, students do have to identify when they write the exams in terms of, of their accommodations. I can tell you that five to six percent of our student body in the IB program have, are, have, have learning exceptionalities. And in terms of the racialized communities, seventy-seven percent of our students are either Black or come from racialized communities, predominantly from the Asian parts of the world.
Thank you Superintendent Cordero. I think that was a very long answer, but trustee Saunders?
Just a very quick follow-up. I'm sorry, if I could, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just a very quick follow-up. So what, what are the, the post-secondary benefits of students graduating from AP and IP? Because we, we, we were, they sort of touched on it, but I'm just interested to find it. Okay.
Ready, Superintendent Cordero?
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll shorten the response. Again, I was, I was trying to focus on the accessibility and opportunity for especially the historically marginalized communities. But in terms of benefits for post-secondary, both AP and IB provide students advanced placement. In other words, the opportunity to be awarded university or college credits in a post-secondary destination. Students sometimes are awarded one credit, sometimes two credits, sometimes three credits. Obviously, there's a cost benefit to that, because secondary, a post-secondary course somewhere ranges between somewhere six hundred to eight hundred dollars a course. So if you're granted three credits, obviously that's, for, for some students, could be about a couple thousand dollars that in savings over their period of time at that university or college. Scholarships, last year alone, at St. Thomas Aquinas, there were two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of scholarships awarded to IB students. Four point two million to the students in our AP program. One point three million at Bishop Reading, where we have our largest population of AP students. In terms of entrance into university or college pathway, in terms of the application, ninety-seven percent of the students in the AP program were successful. And ninety-three percent of the students in the IB program were successful in achieving those programs of choice or universities or colleges of choice. We have had a number of testimonials from different students that are presented at our AP information nights to parents and students wanting to, to enter our program. And I think those students spoke eloquently, and those were presented to our trustees who attended. They spoke eloquently about, you know, the, the joy that they had in the classroom, the joy of learning, the various learning skills that they developed, and that's a key area of both programs. We're talking critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills, resiliency, empathy, and other areas of twenty-first century competency. So those are, that's, that's a list of some of the benefits.
Thank you Superintendent Cordero. And thank you trustee Saunders for bringing this up. I see a hand up, trustee Kennedy, trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up on the same topic? Go ahead.
Thank you Superintendent Cordero. I just want to say I had the privilege of going to not the IB, but the AP. It's fantastic. The stats that Superintendent Cordero mentioned were directly from the AP, I guess, administration, those who run the program. It seems like they're doing a great job. Equality of opportunity is present. I do remember VP Ryan Duffy mentioning that the diversity of the AP program was more diverse than Milton as a whole. I remember him specifically. Three to forty-five percent of students are in the AP program. So it seems to me from those stats that H, HCDSB seems to be a leader, which is fantastic. You know, Canada has a productivity problem versus other countries like the US. It's like we're doing a great job of bringing, bringing students up. Great. Thank you, trustee Cordero. My question is, do we have an opportunity, sorry Superintendent Cordero, do you have an opportunity, do you think, to bring in more international students to this program? Because my understanding is that also brings in revenues to the HCDSB as well.
Yes, Superintendent Cordero?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. I have the benefit of also overseeing the international students program. So I can tell you that currently at St. Thomas Aquinas in the IB program, we have, I believe, two students in, in grade twelve looking to graduate who are international students. It, it's a challenge for international students in the IB program because a second language is required, and for those students, more often than not, English is their second language, but then they have to learn this third language, and we offer French or Italian. So that, that sometimes creates a bear, barrier, to be honest with you, for international students. But in the IB program, or so in the AP program, we have a number of international students, some who came to our system in elementary school and have continued on, others who have joined us directly into secondary school. I believe, I, I can't remember the last number, but we're north of fifty or sixty students in, in AP. Keep in mind that we currently have one hundred and forty international high school students. So, no, you're looking at about twenty, twenty-five percent of that international student population in either the IP or the IB or AP programs.
Thank you Superintendent Cordero. Trustee Kennedy, you have anything else? Okay. Why should I, Agnew, have your hand up, get the floor?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So just seeing the robust, robust conversation, this probably would have been better served as a report rather than a miscellaneous item, so then other trustees could have had a chance to read it and prep questions. But I do have some questions, or I do have one big one. There was a lot of information shared. some questions, or I do have one big one, there was a lot of information shared this evening with respect to data and percentages, so I'm wondering where that's coming from, has that come out of our research department, or is it our equity department, because there was a lot of, again, percentages based on the diverse population participating in AP IB, so I'm just wondering if you got that information from research, or from equity, or where those numbers came from?
Superintendent Cordero?
Through you, Mr., or through you, Chair, door to trustee Agnew, excellent question, the data that I shared with you for the AP program comes directly from the College Board, so when our AP students write their exams, whether it be one, or two, or three, or five, or whatever it may be, they self-identify in the survey of, before writing that exam, so that's where the data comes from those students. With respect to the IB program, they, those students who require accommodations, just like with the AP exams, they also self-identify, the information from the IB program at St. Thomas Aquinas is more anecdotal in nature, but they are the result of students self-identifying either to teachers, or their IB coordinator, who's the vice principal of the school, and the guidance counselor who also teaches the program, who deals with all of these students, and the inner workings and conversations had over a four-year period of time, as well as the portfolio and the personal essay that they write as to why they want into the program, and many of these students speak about their lived experience or their past experience.
Thank you, I see a hand up at the back, is it Ms. Jeraman, is your hand up there? No?
I actually would like to hear from the president with specific...
Are you suggesting, Ms. Jeraman, are you prepared to answer the question which Vice Chair Agnew has asked, or Dr. Collymore, one of...
Through you, Mr. Chair, thanks for the question, trustee Agnew, so I am not aware necessarily of the self-identified questions that are on the AP exam specifically, and I don't have access to that data, so that is not something that I was asked specifically about, so that answers that question, but we do have, you know, our census data that we've collected, that we will be bringing forth to the board, and one of the steps is to link it to our specialty program, so how many students from the various racial identities are going into our schisms, IB, AP, who are gifted, so those are questions that will be coming forth very soon, it's the next sort of step on our analyses.
Thank you. Vice Chair Agnew, you have another follow-up?
Thank you, Dr. Collymore, yes, I do have a follow-up, so, and I'm sorry if I missed it, Superintendent Cordero, there was a lot of information I wasn't expecting, can you just comment on the completion rate, how many of students, of our diverse students are actually completing AP, do we know?
Superintendent Cordero?
The data that I shared with you are the students who complete the program and write the exam in grade 12, so that was the data that I shared.
So of the people that have entered the program, that are from the diverse communities, how many of those are completing the program?
Superintendent Cordero, would you have that information?
For clarity, through you, Mr. Chair, are you asking how many students who entered the program in grade nine actually complete the program in grade 12?
I'm asking, when, so you spoke a lot about the increase in numbers, and how we've expanded the diversity of the program, so what I'm asking is, is that of the increase in the number of students from diverse backgrounds are entering AP, what percentage of those students are actually finishing right through AP, versus the amount that are entering into the program?
Superintendent Cordero, I don't think it's answering the exam, it's finishing the...
Okay. I don't have data to determine what percentage of what group or community of diverse learners starts versus completes, but I can say to you that overall, that approximately 75% of our students who start AP end up writing AP exams, please keep in mind that they may start in four or five AP courses, but end up writing exams in only one or two in grade 12. In terms of the IB program, I would say about 2/3 of our students who begin IB actually complete IB, either the diploma program or the certificate program.
Thank you, we have a couple more speakers here, and moving down to trustee Carabella, you're up next.
I just want to comment that I attended both sessions, and to say that what really struck me and impressed me was the personal dedication of the staff, and how much really they have to put into each student individually, there's a lot of individual engagement going on to make sure that each student who participates in those programs really succeeds, so it was really, that what struck me, as well as all the other information, but wanted to thank our staff.
Thank you trustee Carabella, and I attended the AP session in Bishop Reading, and thank you trustee Carabella for doing the work in the background, and coordinating a few things with staff, moving on, we have trustee Kennedy, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, when I was at the presentation, again, this is only Bishop Reading data, this is what I mentioned, I have this slide in front of me, that the success rate for our students in AP is 99.7%, I don't know how that breaks down, 99.7% success rate for students in AP. I mean, if 99.7 successful, you would think that that's pretty much...
Superintendent Cordero, would you have that number, I remember maybe telling something about it, but...
So, when we're referring to 99.7% success, we're talking about credit accumulation, we're talking about entrance into post-secondary destination, so university or college, and the programs of choice, so, you know, that's what we're looking at.
Thank you. Thank you trustees, once again, trustee Saunders, I like the idea of a report, so trustees can come, prepare the meeting, we had a great discussion based on just a title, when you have it in a report, then everybody can prepare, come prepare, and present, and ask questions in advance, so next time, let's try to make a report and bring it to the board, okay, so, thank you so much anyway, yeah.
What would that entail, sorry, making a report?
So, we're going to make a motion, notice our motion, then staff goes back and prepares a report, and you could give some direction in that motion, to say, bring me this, 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 and this data, and we come, so, next up, yeah, that's a good idea, fair, trustee Powell, your hand up.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask quickly, because I thought it might be asked already, but how do you get the information on teacher race, just in that data?
I don't know the answer, but I'll bounce it to Superintendent Cordero.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, sorry, trustee Powell, can you reiterate that question? I didn't hear it.
When do you get that data, where are you getting that from?
Teacher...
Race.
I didn't share any data about the rate, the different ethnic origins or race of staff, I only shared those of students.
Yeah, I didn't hear that...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I heard that.
Right.
No, I didn't.
It was students?
Students, yeah, I didn't hear the teacher.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, I wouldn't have that data.
Thank you, no worries, trustee Carabella, you're on the same topic?
Well, I just want to clarify that another way, Mr. Chair, we can put topics on the agenda a week in advance, too, I was just checking it in the bylaws, to answer trustees, we can advance, you can submit a request in writing to the chair.
Yeah, there's various ways, but it just gives a little more time to prep, and I think good questions come out, and it's great discussions come out, anyway, trustees, thank you so much for this discussion, I think trustee Powell, you have your hand up again, is it a mistake? Okay, thank you trustees, we have a great program in Milton, 800 students there in Bishop Reading, and going up 1,300, I love the program, we shall now move on down to our next item, thank you Superintendent Cordero and trustee Saunders, okay?
You're welcome.
Our next order of business is open question period, Director Klein, do you have any questions submitted?
We don't.
Thank you, moving on down to our next order of business, in camera, we do not have to go in camera, resolution regarding absentees, we have all trustees present today, no resolution required, adjournment and closing prayer, I have a motion to adjourn. Trust vice chair Agnew moves, seconded by trustee Murphy, beat you to it. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Saying none, the motion carries, may I ask trustee Kennedy, is it, please lead us in the closing prayer.
Please join me in the sign of our faith, in the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. A Lenten prayer followed by a glory beat, dear God, during Lent, help us keep our eyes on Jesus, help us to spend more time talking and listening to, help us to share, help us to share what we have with others, and be sorry for the times we have done wrong. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, world without end, amen, to the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you everybody for a great meeting, great discussion, good night.